I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk, Alvin Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams, he's in the building, I think. He'll probably join us shortly. Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Council McKinnon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, so our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunities you give us, Father, to live, to love, and to serve you in everything that we do. Father, we thank you for just your blessings that you freely give your son, Jesus, most of all, Father, that wonderful salvation that you offer. We pray, Father, for this meeting. Pray for the council, the mayor and his administration, all the staff. Father, we pray that we go forward in a way that pleases you. We pray that you grant us your wisdom, your guidance, knowledge, and discernment to know your will and to follow it at all times. We pray for those hurting, we pray for those in pain, Father, whatever has caused that, whether sickness or what have you, Lord. We just lift them up to you and pray for your blessings on them. We give you all the thanks for all that you've done and promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have an update from EMA, so she's back.
Great.
I'm sure that's not good news always. Sometimes it is, but on this case, it's not. I'm going to remove my mask so everyone can hear. Yeah, we didn't want to be back here again. We didn't want to be talking about COVID again. We wanted to enter into a fall and a winter that was going to be happy and everyone getting together again. And at the rate that we're going right now, that's not going to be possible. We're not going to go over COVID-19 numbers. We're going to go over a few facts that are really specific to all of Etowah County, not just Gaston. The positive numbers are rising. Vaccinations are still low. Thus, the spread includes, and the Delta variant along with others, that there is still a pandemic that is active in Etowah County. The pandemic was never gone. We did relax. We did begin to see our family and greet friends and have large events, and that was before the pandemic was over. So, we're going to be right back to battling it again. Our hospitals have both seen increases and in the numbers of those who are needing intensive care. Our schools are starting back, and we at Emergency Management strongly encourage teachers, staff, administrators, and students to mask up, social distance, and practice good hygiene, whether you've been vaccinated or not. A vaccine does not mean you will not contract COVID, but it does mean that you're less likely to be hospitalized or to die. We don't want to expose ourselves to any of this. Just having COVID brings on long-term health effects that you will have to deal with for the rest of your life. It's not so in some, but it is so in most. If you want to follow the numbers for COVID, the Alabama Department of Public Health Dashboard has been restarted. I'm quite sure it'll take them just a little while to get numbers back up and providers, like our doctors, our pharmacies, reporting those vaccines and those COVID cases at the same time. That's a lot for all of them to take on again. We also will begin again our weekly COVID conference call. And elected officials, if you're not on that call, please email myself or joshtanner@ema the information that you need to be alerted to those conference calls so that you can join. That's the best way to keep up with what's going on countywide. Then also, I wanted to make a statement about several things that are going on in and around Gaston. Quality of Life Services will start Gaston Clinics. First-dose clinics are scheduled for August the 4th, 9th, 10th, 14th, 17th, and 20th. All this can be found on Quality of Life's Facebook page and their social media pages, and we've shared it also on our Gaston-Etowah County Emergency Management Agency page. They do have Vaccinate Gaston vouchers, but these vaccines are not just specific to citizens of Gaston. So, they're specific to everyone that is within Etowah County. Also, tomorrow, the Gaston Public Library will host the Etowah County Department of Public Health for a first-dose vaccine. That's Wednesday, the 4th, 9 to 4. And they will also have the Vaccinate Gaston vouchers. They are doing this to support Vaccinate Gaston, but it's also available to all citizens of Etowah County. Then, in talking with pharmacies yesterday, we've received a total of 114 new Vaccinate Gaston voucher participants. That brings the total to 208 thus far for the City of Gaston that has started their vaccination rounds. Several of those did choose to take Johnson &amp; Johnson, so there'll be some of those that were one-shots only. The line now at 256-563-6120 has both English and Spanish, and we need to thank the Drake Patrick Foundation. They've provided a Spanish translator for the City of Gaston to use in editing flyers that are going to go out, and also Jasmine Lopez, who is an Ambassador for the Chamber of Commerce and also owns an insurance agency here. She is the voice that you'll hear in Spanish on the call line, so she's been a really good partner to work with. And also, the vaccine, I mean, the foundation is going to help work with Vaccinate Gaston in talking to some of our homeless. They're going to be at Elliot Community Center on Sundays when they're being fed and have a conversation with them then and there. It might not be to where all could participate in Vaccinate Gaston, but we want them to know their options. And so, they're going to do some education there for us. Also, one thing to update, it's not specific to Gaston, but for Atala citizens, Thursday at 10:00 a.m. at Karnes Recreation Center is a community COVID question and answer. Social distancing will be adhered to, and masks will be worn indoors. It is in the gymnasium portion. Rick's Drugs will be there along with elected officials and EMA and individuals from the Alabama Department of Public Health, and that is for the citizens of Atala and the city employees of Atala. So, there I am here again with not wonderful news, but do you have questions or ideas or comments, things that we need to work on? We're open to any ideas that may help us at all. And I will say, I did appreciate, Councilman Wilson, your Facebook post about vaccines. If you will, share that again several times. It was some good information.
When did you say the conference call? Is it going to be on Wednesday?
Yes. Wednesday's at 11:00 a.m.
Okay. Can you tell us the percent of positive cases? How high they're?
I did not look at the numbers today.
Last week, it was 145% increase.
That's right. Yesterday, it was like at 176. So, it's not going down, and we've chose for the next few days not to look at the numbers, but to focus on our citizens, on our people, and say, what is it you need? You're not a number, you're a person. And we forget that when we get tied up in emergency planning, and we want to get back to seeing the person and not the number again. So, we're going to do that.
Ms. Gaither, can I throw a brainstorm session out here real quick? My wife and I were in Dallas a few weeks ago in a downtown urban setting there in Dallas, and lots of shops and restaurants similar to Broad Street here. The actual EMTs, medics, were driving down the streets with megaphones in front of these bars and restaurants, saying, if you have not had a shot, come outside. We have them in the truck right now. And people would walk out of the restaurants, literally. I watched several people come out and catch it like the ice cream truck and say, and they would pull over, administer the shot, give them a card, and say, you can come back here. We'll be here too every Friday, you know, for you to come back and get your second shot. Or they may have been giving them the Johnson &amp; Johnson, the single dose. I don't know.
Could have been.
But just an idea.
There are some inventive ways that other cities and municipalities around the country are doing it, and that specifically would be a question for the fire chief as he is over our EMTs.
Sure.
So, you know, maybe something that we could?
Yeah, I'll reach out to them if you want to follow up to, just see if it's something we could figure out. Because again, it occurs to me over and over again, the, one of the big issues is mobility and people's ability to come and meet an appointment and to show up when they're supposed to. If they have that spontaneous opportunity to get the shot, maybe they'd be more likely to take it.
I do think it would cause him a large problem with staffing.
Yeah.
Because we only have so many medics, you know, as it is, so we want to keep them available to respond, but I will bring that to his attention.
And if everybody's okay with it, I'll jab them. I'll get in there.
I don't think anybody's going to be okay with that.
Ms. Gaither, just one final question. Could you provide again the percent vaccinated in the county?
I don't have the percent vaccinated with me today, but I'll be glad to update that on the call tomorrow or email it out. Which would you prefer?
Oh, email's fine.
Okay. I can do that. I didn't, I did not gather that today.
Well, last week, it was 29% with both shots, and it went up to 34%, no, with one shot. So, hopefully, that number will rise since we have 200 or some people to take.
Well, yeah, and it should, we should be able to see it rise in three to four weeks. We'll know when the second shot really comes around as to how much it's increased over the last few. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaither. We're happy to see you, but not necessarily your information. Okay. The Chair will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held on July 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of July 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay. Do we have any proclamation? Unfinished business? We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution granting annulment of North 17th Street between West Megan Boulevard and Alabama Avenue. The applicant is the sole owner of all property, abutting the right of way. If approved, utility companies must be given access to their facilities within the annulment area. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with Akin Holding via Gaston LLC to locate an Olive Garden restaurant at 835 Rainbow Drive. This is to grant a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of five years from the opening date until a total of $500,000 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, if I could just say something real quick, just to clarify. It's estimated that the total project cost is going to be 4.2 million. That's the cost that, or the investment that Olive Garden or Darden will be making in the property, 4.2 million. And again, for those of y'all who aren't clear about how these tax abatements work, the city doesn't give this money upfront. They have to spend the 4.2 million. They have to open the restaurant. They have to do their estimated $4 million in sales. They have to submit sales tax, just like everybody else. And then, if they do that, we give them 2% of the 5% sales tax that the city collects back in the form of a rebate. So, the city never spends a penny unless they spend a whole bunch of money and build a successful business and grow it, and then, as their tax revenues come in, we agree to give them a little percentage of it back. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing a special use permit for disc wireless. This is to install equipment and modify the existing telecommunication facility located at 10412th Street North. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No business? There is none. Department reports, I think Mrs. Wellington has a report for us.
Hello, everyone. I'm just here to update on some activities that Parks and Recreation is doing. First, I do want to announce for K-More and DJI, that First Friday will be happening this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Parks and Rec will have the summer concert at the AMP that starts at 9:00 p.m. We are asking everybody to follow all the guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID while attending these events. Other activities are, flag football registration is open for ages 7 through 16. Registration will end August 23rd, and the seasons will begin September 14th. Our after-school youth program opens for registration this Sunday at 2:00 p.m. This is for children attending Mitchell, Walnut Park, and Raymond Hills Schools. For both of these activities, you can go to gaston.reckdes.com to enroll your child in either flag football or the after-school program. Parks and Recreation will also be hosting at Marana Park, the Summer Jam, which is going to be August 21st, starting at 5:00 p.m. We'll have food vendors, a cornhole tournament, live music by Two de Max, and Tom and Jerry will be shown on our outdoor movie theater, and this is sponsored by the Joint Chiropractic. August 26th, a raging Cajun swamp party will be at the Pittman Theater. Tickets are on sale now on the gaston.reckdes.com for $35 per person. This includes dinner, drinks, and music by the Swamp Papas, and much more. Knocklou Falls Park hours are changing, and we'll be open Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Mini golf hours are Saturday and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Last tee-off is one hour before closing. We have extended Marana Park hours to close, it will be closing at 10:00 p.m. now instead of 8:00 p.m. And remember, Coastal Land and Bait Shop is open, and the Marina is open to launch your boat, and all of our other parks. We, like, again, we are asking everybody to follow all the guidelines to prevent the spread while visiting our parks and facilities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have citizen requests. We have Larry Souls. He wants to talk about city services, proposed rendering plan, and we have Virginia Calhoun, pilgrim prize rendering plan.
Good morning. My name is Larry Souls. I live at 2322 Hill Avenue. I would like to talk about one thing particularly, is the garbage service. There's a lot of garbage laying around in the city of Gaston, on the streets. Is there any kind of resolution that we can do to help people to get garbage? Because it is a city ordinance to handle if you got water tunnel. There's a lot of trash laying around Gaston, period. So, I'm hoping that the city can come up with a resolution to fix that, one way or another. Now, the other thing I want to talk about is also, there was a problem with the, with the incident last Tuesday when it rained. And I have been discussing things with y'all about flooding for the last couple of months. This could have been a real bad tragedy. Now, I would like y'all to take a look at that picture. That picture. There was four children in that car under age of 17. This is on 11th Street, right there at the end of projects. Most of y'all know where Old Marvin's used, hardware used to be at. I have spoke with Mr. Williams about this situation, but there was four children in that car. And it could have been a bad tragedy. This is Ms. Byers. Those are four children in there. Somebody gonna wind up getting hurt because we're not taking care of the flooded areas. I spoke to Mr. Williams three weeks about, count about this area, three weeks ago, three to four weeks ago. Now, last week, somebody almost died because of that. And it's going to be on the city. Cause thing about it, they could have did the same thing they did in East Gaston, and I have pictures of that also. They could have blocked that area in if they can't even dig in it or do anything else to it. Now, would y'all want that on y'all cousins for those four children or anybody else, even if somebody adult, to get killed before we start doing something around here about these flooded areas and stuff? This lady, vehicle is rut now. What the city gonna do about it? Cause I did first mention something about that three months ago. If somebody car get threw up, it's on the city. And she would like to have an answer. And then we got to come up with it. And I hope it's very soon.
Well, Mr. Soul, I'm gonna sound like the bad person, but Ms. Byers, was your car caught up in the flood? Was the car caught up in the flood, or did you all drive up there and see the water and kept going? You know, if your children, you wasn't in the car, your children were in the car, did they stop when they saw all that water, or did they keep going?
Okay, so my kids are not from that side of town, and it was one of the young men that was in the car with him. My son is 17. He is, he does have a driver's license. He did go in the, in the area to turn around, and it was, like I told him, it was probably, it was probably water there, but my point with this, he's not from the area. The little boy that's from the area, he didn't even, it didn't even register to him that it was a ravine there, or it was anything there. They thinking it's, I guess, grass, because it actually was worse than that when we first got there. It was just something a light bulb when I say, hey, ding ding ding, just take some pictures or take a video. Regardless of anything, you know, yes, if it were any fault of his own, there, it still stands. You still have people that live in that area, and it floods over there. It floods in these people's apartment. I have several people contact me and say, hey, my apartment was flooded and messed up my furniture, and I had three people contact me and say, hey, my car went in that same ravine a little while back or whatever, in the same way. Well, the way my son explained to me, he went in to turn around, but instead of him just going in a circle, he stopped. And when he stopped, he put the car in reverse. He said, when he get ready to hit the gas, the water just started sucking him into the ravine. And it, like, the car, if you could, like, I couldn't really tell how fast the water was going until the water started to go down. You could see that. But while it was up, you couldn't just like it was standing water. So, he said he went to go to back up and put, he put the car in reverse. He said, once he put the car in reverse, he went to hit the gas, he wasn't going anywhere. The water started pulling him into the ravine. So, where it actually went in it is not where it ended up. It actually shifted down some. But, I mean, that's the only information I can give you. My point is, I have three kids, really. The other two kids, one was my son's friend. He was taking him home to get clothes and medicine. The little girl in the back, besides for my daughter, was my daughter's best friend, which is my best friend's daughter. So, two of those kids are mine. The youngest that I have, he's four. I only have three blood-wise, but I could have lost two of my kids. And my daughter can't swim. My son, he can, but also, with that being said, when the water was going down, you could see how fast, like, stuff was coming out of my trunk, washing down the ravine. You could see how fast the water was going. They could have been sucked in that water. We could have been looking through, looking for them through those drains or those pipes or anything, you know. So, whatever fault that y'all feel like, you know, it's maybe not on y'all, or, you know, whatever. It's just, it is a problem area, and something needs to be done about that. I really feel like.
I agree with you, and I'm not trying to say that the city is not at fault, but a lesson that can be learned, and it's been said many, 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 many times. When you see water and you're in a car, you stop, you turn around so you won't drown. They may not be in that particular area, but they may be in another area. So, when you see water, you don't know how fast the water is moving or anything. And Mr. Subtle, all over the city of Gaston, I got a film of a painting where there's flooding, so it's not just that particular area. We can't control the rainfall. We can't control how much water has fallen. I've told somebody, what you got to do is talk to God about that. But as far as the water and the flooding, I mean, over there, it was said in a meeting that we should wait on that 24-something, 20-something million-dollar infrastructure. We have funds that we're trying to work on some of the worst areas. We can't wait on those funds, because I've got people over there by me, water's coming up in their houses on Spring Rock. Over on Peyton, water from a river is coming up, and, you know, cars, but in a car, it is dangerous. And so, we're, I'm not trying to not take blame, but I'm saying, tell anybody, when you see water and you're in a car, and you don't know how deep those things are, you turn around so you won't drown. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, and as far as the trash, we can pass all the ordinance that we know to pass. You got people who ride and throw trash out on the streets. You got people who, what do we do? How do we make grown people do anything? That would be my question. Do they care about the city? Do they care about the beauty? I'm sure we have, we have ordinances for trash, but, you know, we don't have enough people to police the area. I see you throw something out on the ground, I'm gonna give you a ticket to pick it up. We don't have any, we don't have anybody that's doing that or can do that. So, I'm saying, you know, everybody got to take responsibility for themselves. Now, as far as that situation, I'm sure that's in Mr. Worthy's district, and I'm sure Mr. Williamson is working on it, but like everything else, it takes time. And I know it's been a long time, but... And I know it's been a long time, but you know, I don't have an answer for you.
I'm gonna say something, since it is in District Three that I represent. This been going on for years. It was flooding like that when I was a kid. So, and I know when Mr. Williams first came, we went down and looked at it, the engineer. So he looked at it, but we haven't fixed it, you know? So we have to do something. And one time they told us, said something about blocking the road off, but now you can't block the road off unless you got a police standing there. You know, we used to, could put barricades up when it did rain, but they won't let us do that anymore for whatever reason. So maybe we need to look at that, because then if you go around the barricade, it's not on the city. So, it'll be on you. But we still, we have to do something. We got some infrastructure money, maybe we can look at enlarging those pipes, because the pipes run under, from what I understand, the old Accra Color Sharpen Center. So we just can't go on private property. So all that water's coming off the mountain, down through there, and it's been flooding like that for years. And that's no excuse, it should have been fixed a long time ago. But we got to be willing to spend the money in that district, it's simple.
Mr. Williamson, I know I'm gonna put you on the spot. In fact, I have a habit of throwing people under the bus. Who said it?
But I want to say I'm sorry that that happened to you, ma'am.
I am too, and I'm not making excuses, and I'm not trying to justify, but I'm just saying, that's a lesson that we can learn from now on. When you see water, you turn around so you won't drown.
Yes, ma'am.
About that particular area, what can you tell us about that particular? That's just one of a thousand in the city, but that particular area.
That is one of many, and certainly we hate to see any tragedy, even potential tragedy happen like that. This by far weighs on all of our hearts. So this area we did look at, I know, I don't remember the exact year, but with the previous administration, we had come really close to partnering with the county to repair this. Had a proposal, brought up with a consultant, and because of funding, it essentially fell apart. The biggest problem right there is because it does cross private property. So we, the nature, I don't remember the ballpark estimate to get it close. I could comfortably say that would be more than a million dollars, just by nature of where that is, the amount, the length of the project that I know, across private property, and then it ties back into the state right away before it goes down toward the other side of the sports complex. All that being said, there's variables of a project, we can move through any of those as we go forward, I can say. And this is what I had tried to confirm with the folks that I talked to about this, including Mr. Suddles. It's one of my recommendations that this be one of the primary projects that we look at with the CARES Act funding. When I get involved, it's not a fast process, that aggravates me also, but it's just not to do it correctly. You have to study it, you have to go through, of course, all the, right away, the properties, go through all that appropriately. But we don't guess at what size structures to install, so we have to study that and go through the proper design to do that. So, that being said, I can't speak for before me, I can speak that we tried to fix it once, didn't have the funding to do that. I believe we have a possibility of getting to that now, and so my hope is that we can jump into not just this one, but a bunch of those other ones that we know are problems. I keep an active list of not all drainage, between drainage projects, road projects, safety concerns. I've got over a hundred on a spreadsheet that I go one by one, try to triage those the best that we can with my professional recommendations. And it's just, it's a process. You know, funding is always one of the problems with everything that we face, but it is what it is.
Can we get funding, but since the state goes into the state right away, is there any way that we could help, that we could partner and get funding from the state also?
I can't speak for them, they have a lot of different avenues for funding. You know, certainly happy to, and we'll have those conversations, we'll have to, to even approach their area. But as far as them participating, I can't speak for that. I'm certainly willing to give it a shot on behalf of all of us, but we'll certainly go down that road to try.
Well, I appreciate you, and I thank you for being nice about me calling you on the spot.
Expected and understood.
All right, at this time, we'll have Virginia Calhoun.
And thank you, Larry, for bringing that up.
We appreciate you.
Yes, I thank you for listening to me for a few minutes. I oppose this rendering plan on Steel Station Road. I live next door to the proposed property, and I've lived there for more than fifty years, raising my family and enjoying my time living there. But my husband passed away, and I'm there by myself, and I can't see no means of me moving, because I don't have the funds to relocate. But I don't want this plant in my back door. I have helped the issues, and my neighbors around me have helped the issues. And we just can't possibly withstand the thought of this, running our property. I've had several offers for my property, but we have put a lot of money and expense in updating our house to be able to live there with our family. My husband and I have enjoyed living there. But we've spent a lot of time, and we don't want to have this, we don't want to have to move away from here. We love this area. But we would appreciate your kindness and thoughtfulness to us property owners around there that have to live in this, out top of people that live close to them, and they say that the smell is horrendous. They've had accidents where they've had road spills, and they've had to get city employees there to clean up the mess. And they say it is horrid, just smelling. One lady had her car damaged from it, she just got the smell in her car, and she could not get the smell out. She had it washed several times, but still wasn't able to get the smell off of her car. So, I just want to beg you, please don't put this plant in my neighborhood. It will ruin our property values, and we won't be able to get anything from our property if we ever need to. But I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate if you would just check into this further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun, we appreciate you coming. At this time, we'll have comments. Mayor, you have any comments? Councilman Worthy?
I have a couple announcements to make, if I can find them here. The first one is that the Freedom Center is opening this week as a place to help Gaston homeless, hurting, and hopeless. It will be open during daytime hours, and offer somewhere that people can bathe safely, wash their clothes for free, get help with food or clothing, eat a hot meal, or just get out of the heat, cold or rain. We hope you all will help us spread the word. To begin, we will be opening on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from ten AM to four PM. This Thursday, August the fifth, is our open house from four to six, and they are inviting everyone, all the council and the mayor to come, to open house. And the location is sixteen oh one West Megan Boulevard. This is Reverend Bruce Word, he, him and his church is opening up this Freedom Center on West Megan. So, that's one announcement. And I have one more. Okay. Sleeves up. August the tenth, twenty twenty-one, from two PM to five PM, Pro Care College Homes, four twenty North Sixth Street, Gaston, Alabama. They will be doing a vaccine clinic there, and ages twelve and up. The first ten people receive the COVID nineteen, who received the COVID nineteen vaccine on eight ten, or eight seventeen, will receive a fifty dollar gift card on behalf of Mr. Drake Art Patrick's Twenty First Kid Foundation. And also, on August the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, they will be, Quality Life will be doing the clinic at Stars Park. And the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Company will be hosting a two hundred dollar drawing for residents who qualify. And that is from nine AM to twelve PM. And then I also want to talk about, I've got several calls over the weekend with someone shot up a car down on Tuscaloosa Avenue there, stemming, they said, from the club that spring in Tuscaloosa. So, we, we've talked about it, and you know, and it's a lot of older people live in that area. I've gotten more calls over the weekend, because they're opening up and staying open to four and five o'clock in the morning, and the residents cannot sleep. So we've talked about it, we gotta do something. I don't know what we gonna be able to do, you know, but we got to do something. So that's on the police department and the administration, because I've talked with several of them, and I've been telling them, I've done what I could do, so now you have to call the mayor's office. And every time something go on, call the police department, because we got to document it. So, hopefully, we'll have something in the works. So, to the community, just hang in there, and we have to keep, we have to quit letting people take advantage of our community. And I don't care if they do look like us, and that's what they're doing. There's no reason for someone to have a club open in a neighborhood that late at night, when you know you got nothing but elderly people around that lives there, close by. So, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Councilman.
For today.
All righty, thank you, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, just one thing, some good news. I want to recognize Ms. Laura Minton, she's a two thousand sixteen graduate of Gaston City High School. She's currently a student at UAB School of Medicine and the American College of Radiology's peer scholar. She was just selected as one of fourteen students to present at the National Medical Association Convention in Washington DC. Fourteen students in the entire country. So that is a product of the Gaston City school system, so congratulations to Laura Minton and her family. That's an incredible accomplishment, and I hope that when she completes her medical studies, she will choose to come back to Gaston and be a part of the medical industry here in town. That's all I have, ma'am.
Councilman Reed?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Councilman William?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Ba.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Want to echo what Councilman Worthy said about the Freedom Center, and want to thank Reverend Bruce Word and his church members at the Freedom Church. That's gonna be a really much-needed component of how we address the homeless issue here in Gaston. And just thank you for the work they've done, the money they've invested, and our prayers go out to them as they enter into this, into this program of helping the homeless. Also, the Catholic Center for Concern at St. James Church about a week ago, started a homeless, kind of a day, not daycare, but a day center program, kind of doing the same thing, providing opportunities to get out of the heat, some food, and some other, I think maybe some washing clothes and things like that. So, and the Catholic Center for Concern's been doing that, y'all, this is probably about their fortieth year where they've been helping the less fortunate in our community. This is a new program that they've started there to reach out to the homeless. I think Renee Baker said our homeless population has more than doubled in the last year. Due primarily because there's only two overnight shelters in a four-county area. One is the Salvation Army on, here on Eleven Street, and the other is the Love Center. So that people are coming from other counties, because this is the only place they can find help. So, just kind of keep that in mind as you see our new visitors in town. We need to direct them to where they can get the most help and get the most need. I know it's become a point of a lot of focus of my research and my presentation. The person that was gonna help me do that became ill last week and was not able to finish the presentation. And so that's gonna be coming in the coming weeks. Yeah, I don't have a date, depends on when the illness is over, and depends on when he's able to come back to work. So, just bear with us on that, and thoughts and prayers are with this person as they recover. You also, I think many of you have seen a letter that my wife received at Yer Brown Elementary School in relation to the rendering plant. And, you know, it's just unfortunate that this has come to this kind of a level where someone is approaching my wife via a very unkind letter, trying to put pressure and intimidation on, I guess, on me to do what they want me to do. And it's just uncalled for, it's just unfortunate that this has happened. You know, it's just disappointing, and I get that people are disappointed, our whole country's disappointed right now. Everybody's mad, everybody's angry, and so I understand it, but you know, that's going a little too far, that's going a lot too far. So, you know, if you have a problem with me, call me and talk to me. I've had three in-person meetings in my council office, I think in the last seven, eight days, they've been very productive meetings. We got along well, we had good conversation. That's the way we conduct ourselves as adults and as mature citizens, is that we can have dialogue, we can disagree, and we can move forward. I'm gonna restate my position that I've had for nine months. I'm gonna listen to my constituents, and I'm gonna vote the will of District Four in Gaston. That's democracy, I'm elected to represent the constituents in District Four. I've always said that I'm gonna do that in this situation with the rendering plant. I've also said I'm gonna do my own research. And then I've said that I would never vote to bring anything that would bring harm to Gaston or the surrounding area. Nothing has changed, I haven't changed that. There's been nothing to vote on, so therefore I haven't voted. And I, it's, it's, I don't understand why that's not understood. There's been nothing presented to this council to vote on. And the way that democracy works is exactly what you folks are doing with your information and your signs, and coming to the council meetings and voicing your displeasure, that is perfectly fine. That is the way it's supposed to work. But you can't go a step further and force an elected body to vote on something that hasn't been presented to vote on yet. I don't think that's the way democracy works. I've never seen it work that way before. And I don't think we're gonna start now, so we've got to do what the, do what the process is, and we're still in that. We're still in that process. I mean, I just don't know what else to say. I mean, it's, and please leave my wife alone, please, I will say that, please leave my wife alone, please leave her out of this. She teaches kindergarten at Yer Brown Elementary, and that's where the letter was received, that's where it was addressed. My goodness. I mean, my goodness, what has this come to? I want to thank my classmate, longtime friend, Larry Suddles, for, Larry's got a great heart, and Larry's, anytime Larry stands up and says something, I pay attention, because I think he has the community's best interest at heart. And Heath Williamson and I have talked about drainage issues in Country Club and in Clubview. I've got some major issues, just like every district has. I think you told me, Heath, at one point, about two hundred to three hundred million dollars would fix all the drainage issues? Y'all, our annual budget's fifty-two million, we don't have two hundred million dollars. He's got that list of, and he's probably got it prioritized somewhat, so we're gonna have to start eating that elephant one bite at a time, and I think that we've probably been doing that, I think this CARES money, this American Rescue Plan money's gonna help us get there, but it's twenty-four million dollars, it's not two hundred million. So, please let us know as representatives of your district where you have water issues and drainage issues. We probably already know, Heath probably already has it on the list, but I can promise you, there is a lot of effort put into that, and a lot of resources tied in to try to fix those things, it just boils down to money. It just boils down to money, I mean, we probably need two hundred million dollars to fix the drainage problem in Gaston, Alabama. We're not the only city that has that challenge, I would venture to say every city has that challenge. So we're not unique in that, in that manner. That's all I have, Madam President.
I know that Mrs. Wellington has already announced about the summer concerts, so for Councilman Wilson's benefit, there is, at the Mod Glossa, there's a seventy tribute, and it's to Dr. Zar Amazing Funk Monsters. there is, uh, at the Mothglosser, there's a seventy tribute, and it's to Dr. Zar Amazing Funk Monsters. He wanted me to say something else, but I didn't. I call for a motion to adjourn.